I now call to order the City County Council meeting for Monday, April the 12th, 2021, and we will begin our meeting with a prayer and pledge of allegiance led by Counselor Bain.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to yield to Neil Mack, pastor of Canby Tabernacle, to give this evening's opening prayer.
Love to. Thank you very much, everyone, for this opportunity. And before we pray, just let me say thank you to every council member that's on this call tonight. Most Indianapolis citizens are like me. We just go along our merry way in life, just wondering how things get done. And things get done on meetings like this and with people who have sacrificed and committed to give time and resources to make society work. So just let me say from the bottom of my heart, thank you very much. If you don't mind, just bow your heads and feel free to pray along with me. Lord Jesus, we thank you tonight for the many blessings that you poured out upon us in the city of Indianapolis, the state of Indiana, and this wonderful nation known as the United States of America. We just pray that you would give us wisdom tonight, give us guidance. Lord, I pray a special blessing on every member of this council, Lord, the burdens that they bear and the concerns that they bring to the table. I just pray that you give them peace, that you give them balance in their lives. Lord, I ask you to touch our mayor, Mayor Hoxette. Lord, only you know the burdens and the difficulty that he has to face as the leader of this city. Pray that you touch every council member. And a special prayer, Lord, tonight for all the citizens that we serve in this community and every community across this great state, across this great nation, and of course, this planet, third rock from the sun, Earth, Lord. We pray that you'd touch every person under the sound of our voice, Lord. Keep your hand upon the first responders, the police officers, Lord. And I pray that in the dark recesses of this city and many other cities where there are people in need, that you would lay it upon one of our hearts to reach out, because while we serve in an official capacity, we are ministers of good. And I pray that you touch every person and bless this meeting tonight. In your name we pray, Lord Jesus. Amen.
Counselor Bain, would you lead in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
But because it was...
I'm sure I'm not hearing.
I'll start again then. This evening, our counselors, I'd like to begin with our remembrance of IMPD Officer Breann Lee. This past Friday, April the 9th, one year since the death of IMPD Officer Breann Lee murdered in the line of duty as she attempted to protect the life of another, which she did not only because it was her job, but because it was who she was, someone who looked out for others before looking out for herself, who was brave when others were scared, who gave all she had for her community. Many of us these days have begun to anticipate the moment our lives return to normal, but that moment will never come for Breann's family. It will not come for her friends or loved ones or the brave men and women who served in uniform beside her. So let us pause together for a moment of silence to honor Officer Breann Lee. Remember those who grieve her loss and send up thanks. I'll be grateful, City. Thank you, counselors. Madam Clerk, please conduct a voice roll call. Counselors, be signified by stating your name and answering present on the clerk's reading of your name so that we have a clear record of who is in attendance. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Adamson?
Counselor Adamson, present.
Counselor Anay?
Counselor Anay, present.
Counselor Bain?
Counselor Bain, present.
Counselor Barth?
Barth, present.
Counselor Boots?
Boots, present.
Counselor Brown?
Counselor Brown, present.
Counselor Carlino?
Counselor Carlino, present.
Counselor Dilk?
Counselor Dilk, present.
Counselor Ethan Evans?
Counselor Ethan Evans, present.
Counselor Jared Evans?
Counselor Jared Evans, present.
Counselor Graves?
Counselor Graves, present.
Counselor Gray?
Counselor Gray, present.
Counselor Hart?
Counselor Hart, present.
Counselor Jackson?
Jackson, present.
Counselor Jones?
Counselor Jones, present.
Counselor Larison?
Counselor Larison, present.
Counselor Lewis?
Counselor Lewis, present.
Counselor Masgari?
Counselor Masgari, present.
Counselor McCormick?
Counselor McCormick, present.
Counselor Mallory?
Counselor Mallory, present.
Counselor Oliver?
Counselor Oliver, District 9, present.
Counselor Osley?
Counselor Osley, present.
Counselor Potts?
Counselor Potts, present.
Counselor Ray?
Counselor Ray, present.
Counselor Robinson?
Counselor Robinson, present.
Thank you, Mr. President. All counselors are present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have no outside guests this evening, so we will proceed to official communications. So that next item on our agenda is official communications, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, you are hereby notified that regular meetings of the City County Council, Police, Fire, and Solid Waste Collection Special Service District Councils will be held electronically and in the City County Building in the council chambers on Monday, April 12th, 2021, at 7:00 PM. The purpose of such meetings being to conduct any and all business that may come properly before regular meetings of the councils, sincerely by Osley, President, City County Council. Pursuant to the laws, I'm sorry, ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the laws of the state of Indiana, I caused to be published in the Court and Commercial Record and in the Indianapolis Star on Friday, March 26th, 2021, a copy of a notice of public hearing on proposal number 116, 2021, set here to be held on Monday, April 12th, 2021, at 7:00 PM in the Public Assembly Room of the City County Building, and a copy of legal notice of general ordinance number 10, 2021, proposal number 106, 2021. Respectfully, Serita Hughes, Clerk of the City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, I have approved of my signature and delivered this day to the clerk of the City County Council, Serita Hughes, the following ordinances: fiscal ordinance number six, general ordinance numbers seven through 10, special ordinance number two, general resolution numbers two and three, special resolution number 18, Joseph H. Hoxette, Mayor. Mr. President, this concludes the official communications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And the next item on our agenda is adoption of the agenda. Do I consent?
Consent.
Consent.
Thank you, counselors. The next item on our agenda is approval of journals for March the 15th, 2021. Do I consent?
Consent.
Consent.
Thank you, counselors. We will now proceed to presentation of petitions, memorials, social resolutions, and council resolutions. And the first item on our agenda is proposal number 136, which recognizes the 125th anniversary of Lock &amp; Veldhof Funeral and Cremation Services by Counselor Anay.
Thank you, Mr. President. A special resolution recognizing the 125th anniversary of Lock &amp; Veldhof Funeral and Cremation Services. Whereas, Lock &amp; Veldhof Funeral and Cremation Services has been serving the South Side, downtown, and greater Indianapolis community since its inception in 1896 by Anthony J. Locke. And whereas, the first location was established on South Meridian Street where I-70 currently crosses and was moved to its present location in the early 1920s by Anthony P. Locke, A.J. Sons. And whereas, Lock &amp; Veldhof Funeral and Cremation Services' current location was originally part of a large farm stretching back to West Street and the railroad tracks. The original part of the house was built in 1877 and had additions added in 1954 and 1960. And whereas, new additions were added by Leo Locke, Sr., who was quite active in the funeral business and community until his passing in 1972. The chapel he added in 1960 was one of the largest at that time and will seat 130 people. His son, Leo Jr., then took up the family business in the early 1970s and continues to help even though the business was sold to Jeff Veldorf in 2010. Jeff Veldorf completely remodeled the facility inside and out and brought everything up to date. And...
And whereas, Lock &amp; Veldorf believes in being an active part of our community, as Jeff Veldorf is a member of both St. Rock and Sacred Heart parishes in Indianapolis, and he serves in the parish council at St. Rock Catholic Church and on the board of the Old South Side Neighborhood Association, as a member of the Stadium Village Business Association, and as a block captain with Keep Indianapolis Beautiful. And whereas providing comfort for neighborhood families in their time of need is the main concern of the staff of Lock &amp; Veldorf, they are a small family-owned firm and take great pride in the personal services they offer. And now therefore, be it resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and of Marion County, Indiana, Section 1, the Indianapolis City County Council proudly recognizes Lock &amp; Veldorf Funeral and Cremation Services on their 125th anniversary. Section 2, the council extends best wishes for continued success to Lock &amp; Veldorf Funeral and Cremation Services. Section 3, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature heretofore. In Section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with IC 36-3-4-14. And Mr. President, I so move. Second.
Very good, counselors. Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? Counselor Anay?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just note, I'm not sure if Jeff's on the call. I think he's having some technical difficulties. So if he is, I'd love to have him speak. But before that, I'd just like to thank Jeff for his very active role in the Old South Side and South Side as a whole. Lock Funeral Home, now Lock &amp; Veldorf Funeral Home, has served this community, as it's been noted, 125 years. 25 years is a great success for a small business. So when you think about 125 years, that's just really incredible to the testament of work that they have done for so long. So I just wanted to thank Jeff for his service, and he's owned it since 2010. Thank Counselor Jones for letting me put my name on it as Lock &amp; Veldorf is in Council District 16. So thank you.
All right. Is there another speaker for proposal number 136? Are hearing none? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay. Excellent. The motion carries. Thank you, counselors. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 141, which honors Indiana University President Michael McRobbie upon his retirement after more than four decades of service and leadership in higher education. Is there anyone here this evening to speak on proposal 141? All right. Seeing one, I'm actually going to read it myself. And I would ask Counselor Jones if she would assist me in this. Counselor Jones, are you up for this?
Sir, I need to pull it up, so sorry. I'll hold it up.
All right. I shall begin then.
Okay.
A special resolution recognizing the service and leadership of IU President Michael A. McRobbie upon his retirement, whereas Michael A. McRobbie became the 18th president of Indiana University on July 1st, 2007, and has for the past 14 years been responsible for eight campuses, more than 9,000 faculty, 11,000 staff, yearly enrollment of nearly 115,000 undergraduate and graduate students, and an annual budget totaling more than $3 billion. And whereas President McRobbie has led one of the largest academic transformations in Indiana University history, one that includes the creation of the Richard M. Fairbank School of Public Health in Indianapolis, the School of Public Health Bloomington, the Lilly Family School of Philanthropy at IUPY, the world's first of its kind. And whereas during his tenure, President McRobbie redoubled Indiana University's commitment to student success, faculty development, research, economic development, international engagement, and the health of Indiana residents. And...
Whereas, in 2012, President McRobbie became the first sitting IU president to be elected a member of the American Academy of Arts and as a member and former chair of the Board of Trustees of Internet 2, is a member of the boards of Indiana University Health and of Riley Children's Hospital, is a member of the Council of Foreign Relations, and is the former chair of the university's Research Association, which is responsible for Firma Lab. And whereas President McRobbie has had a substantial involvement in the development of the life and health sciences in Indiana, and under his leadership, IUPY has become the largest educator of the health and life science workforce in the state. And whereas during his tenure, IUPY has bestowed 69,748 associates, bachelors, masters, and doctoral degrees from Indiana University and 16,999 from Purdue University. And... Whereas, 64.5% of these graduates live in Indianapolis and were prepared by the university for careers in health and life sciences, social work, technology, teaching, engineering, law, public policy, business, the arts, and more. Whereas, the IUPY campus has had an economic impact of $2.3 billion on the central Indiana region, and one out of every 42 jobs in the IUPY service area are supported by IUPY. And whereas, President McRobbie's broad expertise in fostering research partnerships and his collaborative leadership style has contributed greatly to the provision by Indiana University and IUPY of vast resources of data and expertise, such as the Polis Center, Savvy Database, the Indiana Business Research Center, the IU Public Policy Institute, the Center for Research on Inclusion and Social Policy, which are used by businesses, nonprofits, and federal, state, and local units of government, including this council, to support informed and equitable decision-making. Now therefore, be it resolved by this City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and of Marion County, Indiana. Section 1, the Indianapolis City County Council proudly recognizes the service and accomplishments of Michael A. McRobbie during his 14 years of president of Indiana University. Section 2, the council heartily congratulates President McRobbie on his retirement from Indiana University and looks forward to his continuing contributions as an author and civic leader. Section 3, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature heretofore. Section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with 1C 36-3-4-14. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
I shall second.
Second.
All right. Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Any comments from counselors? I would ask, oh, Counselor Evans, even if...
Thank you, President Osley. I would, if possible, like to be added on as a co-sponsor of this. You know, me personally, as somebody who went to IUPY as a student from 2015 through 2018 for the graduate program for teaching, this was a great education I received, and I couldn't speak more highly of the time I had there and the program and the university itself. So I feel a great honor in having this proposal here tonight for President McRobbie. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Evans. I see Mr. McRobbie, President McRobbie waiting. I guess I have one more. Counselor McCormick?
Hi. Thank you, Mr. President. So as, along with Counselor Evans, as a graduate with my bachelors and masters with my UPY, and as a current employee of IUPY, I want to congratulate President McRobbie. I remember when he became president, I was working with the university already. So I want to congratulate him again on this. And if it's allowed, please accept me as a co-sponsor.
Thank you. All right, thank you. President McRobbie?
Well, can you hear me okay? Is that...
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you. Well, let me most sincerely thank the members of the City County Council, Mr. President, Counselor Osley, and the other counselors who spoke so generously. I really do greatly appreciate this resolution. And I particularly appreciate the support that you've given to the IUPY campus over the time that I've been president. There are many areas, some of which were mentioned in your resolution, that have had a big impact on the campus and where the campus has had an impact on the city and obviously directly with the council at times, too. I want to say that one thing that really sticks in my mind that has been utterly transformative of the campus was the conversion of Michigan and New York to two-way streets. Probably nothing in the 24 years that I've been at Indiana University, nothing, I think, has had a bigger impact on making that campus more accessible and making it a friendlier, welcoming place than that particular change. And that was something I know the council played a major role in. IUPY has delighted and very proud how well it has done the last 14 years. It has got better and better. And as IUPY gets better and better, that's good for the city and of course is good for the state. And you have contributed in turn to IUPY getting better. I greatly look forward in the future to seeing some of the initiatives you mentioned, some of the new schools really grow and prosper. Clearly, we never expected a pandemic, but I think we are very grateful in the state that only seven years ago, we formed two schools of public health, and one of them being, of course, the Fairbank School of Public Health in Indianapolis, which has played such a major role in helping to counter the pandemic. So again, counselors, thank you enormously for this great honor you have paid me. I really am extremely grateful and appreciate it very much.
Thank you so much, President McRobbie. We have intended on your school in so many ways here on the council to inform us, to educate us. They've played a significant role, especially the Polis Center and Savvy have been tremendous partners here with the city. And if I may also say that your chancellor for external affairs, your vice chancellor for external affairs, Andy Conrad Warner, has been more than tremendous as a partner with the council, you know, and with the city. So we shall miss your presence. Thank you for the work that you've overseen these years. I've got a special, obviously, I've got a special heart for the School of Philanthropy for obvious reasons. But we thank you for the work that you have done.
Thank you again very much.
All right. So the motion has been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Signify by nay. All right. Motion carries. Again, President McRobbie, thank you, and all the best. All right, counselors. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 142, which condemns all forms of racist harassment, violence, or bias against the Asian-American and Pacific Islander community. I will speak on this this evening.
Hi, Mr. President. This is Counselor McCormick. I am happy to be here to co-sponsor with Counselor Potts and Counselor Brown, and Carlino will read along with us as well. Thank you. So proposal number 142, whereas all communities of color, including Black and Brown people, indigenous people, Asian-Americans, and Pacific Islanders, and generally all racial, ethnic, socioeconomic, and social minorities are at risk of discrimination. And whereas all forms of racism and ethnocentrism constitute a major threat to equity, diversity, and inclusivity, and social justice in the lives of Black and Brown people, indigenous people, Asian-Americans, and Pacific Islanders, and generally all racial, ethnic, socioeconomic, and social minorities in terms of education, justice, environment, employment, and economy, income, housing, health, and healthcare and safety. And whereas, on February 20th of 2020, the members of this council unanimously adopted a proposal declaring racism to be unjust, reiterating our support for equal rights for all, and affirming the city's commitment to ending disparities based on race, race, or identity. And...
Whereas racism and ethnocentrism have a negative impact on the well-being of individuals, families, and the entire Indianapolis community. And whereas 29,429 Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders, who represent 3.4% of Marion County's total population today, call Indianapolis home. And whereas, March 11th, 2020, 21, marked the one-year anniversary of the Declaration of COVID-19 as a global pandemic and the beginning of a surge in anti-Asian harassment and violence nationwide. And whereas, over 2 million Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders are working on the front lines of this COVID-19 pandemic in healthcare, law enforcement, first responders, transportation, supermarkets, and other service industries. And whereas, a periamdom November 2020 survey found that 1 in 6 Asian-American and Pacific Islander voters say they or a family member have faced racism related to COVID-19, with the targets of these incidents often being elders, women, or low-income people. And...
Whereas, the Stop AAPI Hate Reporting Center received information on more than 3,795 incidents of racism directed at Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders in the United States between March 19th, 2020, and February 28th, 2021, including reports of verbal harassment, physical assault, civil rights violations, and online harassment occurring in all 50 states and the District of Columbia. And whereas, the Indiana chapter of the National Asian Pacific American Women's Forum reports that one of the most devastating effects of the pandemic has been the dramatic spike in discrimination, bigotry, and violence toward AAPI Hoosiers, and that across Indiana, children have been bullied at school, families going outdoors, and employees going to work have faced hostility, verbal abuse, and violence. And...
Whereas, 46 Indiana organizations and institutions based in the state have joined a call for action from the Indiana chapter of the National Asian Pacific American Women's Forum, including Indiana University, the City of Bloomington, Butler University, Indiana American Chinese Association, Korean American Association of Indiana, Faith in Indiana, Greater Indianapolis Multi-Faith Alliance, Indiana Muslim Advocacy Network, Indianapolis Jewish Community Relations Council, Marion County Commission on Youth, Immigration Justice Task Force, Women for Change, and the Indiana National Organization for Women. And whereas, this council has previously and repeatedly repudiated racism and ethnocentrism while articulating its support for the dignity of all persons and its commitment to dismantling inequities based...
and its commitment to dismantling inequities based on race, place, and identity.
Be it now resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and of Marion County, Indiana. Section 1, the Indianapolis City County Council condemns and denounces any and all forms of anti-Asian or Pacific Islander sentiment, including online and verbal harassment, vandalism of business or personal property, and physical attacks. Section 2, the council's similarity condemns all manifestations of expression of racism, xenophobia, discrimination, scapegoating, and ethnic or religious intolerance. Section 3, the council supports local law enforcement officials in their efforts to expediteally investigate and document all reports of crimes and threats against the AAPI community in our city and to obtain justice for both victims and perpetrators.
Section 4, the council urges all city and county agencies and elected officials to combat misinformation and discrimination that puts the AAPI community at risk. Section 5, the council encourages city and county agencies and community partners to implement procedures and programs to help Asian-American and Pacific Islander persons, families, faith communities, businesses, and institutions if they are targeted by acts of discrimination and hate. Section 6, the council affirms its ongoing commitment to building a more inclusive, diverse, tolerant, and equitable city for the benefit of all its residents. Section 7, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature here too. In section 8, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with Indiana Code 36-3-4-14. And Mr. President, I so move.
Thank you.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors?
Mr. President?
Counselor Ethan Evans?
Counsel Oliver?
Well, just Counsel Ethan Evans?
Thank you, President Oslay. I just wanted to iterate my support for everything that has been said so far. Definitely need to support all victims of hate, especially going on right now, targeted the Asian-American Pacific Islander community. Need our support and this definitely will show that the city is behind this 120%. And I want to add my name as a co-sponsor if possible, so thank you.
Very good, thank you. Chairman Oliver?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank all of the readers of the resolution and of course the sincerity that they gave in the reading. And my heart goes out to all of us council that support their resolution. And I support it wholeheartedly and I just want to say thanks to all that brought their resolution forward to be read for the city in here. President.
Thank you, Chairman. Additional comments? Counsel Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. President. Similar to Chairman Oliver, I'd just like to thank the authors of this proposal for bringing it forward. Appreciate their leadership and I'd like to go on as a co-sponsor as well.
Very good. Counsel Boots?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ditto from Dano and I would like to be added as a sponsor as well. Thank you.
Excellent. Counsel Jones?
The same, thank you to my colleagues for their leadership. Ben, I would like to be added as a co-sponsor as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any additional comments from councilors? All right, is anyone, Counsel Potts?
I was just going to say thank you, Mr. President. At the appropriate time, we do have a guest who I'd like to invite to speak on this special resolution.
All right, very good. Would you please introduce the guest?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to introduce an incredible leader in the city of Indianapolis and a leader of the Indiana Chapter of the National Asian-Pacific American Women's Forum, Catherine Chi.
Thank you, Counselor Potts, and thank you to all the councilors for your leadership. Your support means a lot. Asian-Americans have been affected by the rise in anti-Asian sentiment in the past year. Since March 2020, there has been over 3,700 anti-Asian hate incidents reported. And this type of racism isn't new in this country. And unfortunately, it's taken something so jarring, the death of six Asian-American women, for our country to finally pay attention to what's been going on. Like all Americans, Asian-Americans deserve to live in a safe, inclusive, and just community where all people can thrive and are treated with worth and dignity. And for this reason, the need to do something about the recent violence and racism against AAPIs is an urgent matter. We ask that you continue to listen to us and pay attention to our needs. What we as a city, as a country, as a community decide to do or not to do over the next few weeks will set the tone for the future of Asian-American status for a long time. This is important, this is urgent. And amid all the pain of the last year, Asian-Americans are asserting their power. We're more organized and mobilized than ever before and we voted in record numbers this past fall. And Asian-American women in particular have been leading calls for change, with Nap Up Indiana being an excellent example. We look forward to working with our city government to create a safe, inclusive, and just community. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments this evening. Councilors, any additional comments? All right, but then all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, please signify by nay. Thank you, councilors, the motion carries. And to our speaker guest, thank you very much for your comments. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 143, which honors all those who contribute to the city of Indianapolis hosting a safe, successful NCAA men's basketball tournament. Who will be speaking on that?
President Oslay, it's Counsel Jared Evans. I'll be speaking and hopefully Counsel Jones will support me in this too.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you, Counselor. Whereas between March 18th and April 5th, 2021, the city of Indianapolis hosted the NCAA men's basketball tournament, hosting 68 college basketball teams, including players, coaches, and staff, and more than 115,000 visiting fans. And whereas a coalition of Indianapolis organizations, including the Capital Improvement Board and the Indiana Immigrant Center, Downtown Indy, Visit Indy, Indiana Sports Corporation, Keep Indianapolis Beautiful, Pacer Sports and Entertainment, the Indianapolis Colts, Lilly Endowment, Indianapolis Cultural Trail, the Arts Council of Indianapolis, Butler University, AES Indiana, Heritage Interactive Services, the IUPUI Office of Sustainability, the Indiana State Fair, Indiana University Health, and thousands of Indianapolis community volunteers joined forces to show our city at its Hoosier hospitality best, providing a once-in-a-lifetime experience to players, parents, officials, and fans in one of the most climate-friendly, environmentally sustainable March Madness tournaments ever. And whereas...
Whereas the hard work of those organizations was combined with the diligent efforts of Indiana Governor Eric Holcomb, the Indianapolis Mayor Joe Hogsett, the Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department, the Indianapolis Fire Department, Indianapolis EMS, the Indianapolis Department of Public Works, Indy Parks, and the Marion County Health Department to ensure the health and safety of our visitors, our residents, and our workforce throughout the tournament. And whereas Indianapolis community volunteers with Downtown Indy, Inc. hosted community cleanups to welcome fans to a spotless mile square before and during the tournament, while volunteers with Keep Indianapolis Beautiful, including Butler Blue, for picked up litter along 12 miles of city streets along the routes teams traveled, and planted 68 trees in Andrew Ramsey Park and Elwood Mary Black Park, and won for every team in the tournament. And...
Whereas despite these laudable contributions, the true MVPs of the 2021 NCAA tournament are the workers of Indianapolis, who safely housed hundreds of players and staff from 68 teams and four hotels, some for almost an entire month. Carefully moved players and staff between four game venues, prepared and individually wrapped thousands of meals for more than 88 local restaurants to be delivered to teams almost around the clock, provided the behind-the-scenes crews managing the sound, lighting, and overall production in the venues, and cared for fans at Hinkle Fieldhouse, Lucas Oil Stadium, Bankers Life Fieldhouse, and Indiana Farmers Coliseum. And whereas it is thanks to these workers that out of the more than 28,000 COVID-19 tests conducted over the course of the NCAA men's basketball tournament, only 15 individuals tested positive for COVID-19, a case positivity rate of only 1/20 of 1%, with only one team eliminated from the tournament due to the virus in 66 out of 67 scheduled games proceeding as planned.
And whereas it was the commitment and spirit of our city's workers that inspired national media outlet Sports Illustrated to declare of Indianapolis, "This city is lighting the path of hope and optimism as our nation emerges slowly from its COVID-19 cave. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and of Marion County, Indiana." Section 1, the Indianapolis City County offers its deepest thanks to the persons and organizations listed above, with special recognition for the dedication of the Indianapolis workforce as our community rebounds from the COVID-19 pandemic. Section 2, this council congratulates all those who took part in the planning and execution of an overwhelmingly successful, safe, and sustainable NCAA men's basketball tournament. Section 3, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature here too. Section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with IC 36-3-4-14. Mr. President, I so move.
Mr. President, this is Counsel Evans. If I may take a special point of privilege, I'd like to give a special thanks to the Indiana Sports Corporation, which helped lead this entire event. And I want to just kind of say thanks here because they're headed up by a Ben Davis graduate and Ryan Vaughn. So it was no surprise to me, coming from Ben Davis High School, that this thing was one of the best events in the entire country. But they also have other Ben Davis graduates such as Shannon Sullivan and other folks. So just headed up by BD and I'm really proud of everything they've done and achieved for the city of Indianapolis.
Second.
All right, so probably moved and seconded. And thank you, Counsel Evans, for pushing up BD. We appreciate that. Are there additional comments from councilors? Counselor, nay.
Thank you, Mr. President. I thank Counsel Jared Evans for this special resolution. I thought it was awesome and I think he used the right words. So many people joined forces to make this happen. And when I thought about it, it was kind of unique. Back in 1987, when we hosted the Penn Am Games, we got the games because Chile at the time withdrew and we kind of got it at the last minute and rescued those games. And as a result, it helped really put Indianapolis on the map and secure our title as amateur sports capital of the world. And you fast forward over 30 years, we rescued the 2021 NCAA tournament. And I think that tournament, well, as the 1987 Penn Am Games did, continued to keep us on the map. And there were many organizations and people that contributed. I'm proud of some of the Southsiders that volunteered to help clean up the city and help make those games smooth. So just kudos to everybody involved and the hell of a job done by the city of Indianapolis overall. Thank you.
Excellent. Counsel Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd also like to thank Counsel Evans for pushing this forward. And I want to take a minute to recognize my constituents at Butler University. They did an extremely good job in running and facilitating the games that were played at Hinkle. It went incredibly smoothly. The chief of police and my fellow neighborhood association board member, Michael Keltner, did a remarkably good job in keeping District 7 and the neighborhood informed on what to expect and how it would go. I'd also like to thank our friends at Keep Indianapolis Beautiful. It was referenced in the resolution, but a lot of the activity they did happened right here in District 7. I was right there picking up trash with them and sharing them on as they did tree plantings in two of our parks. So an overall amazing effort, I wanted to highlight the work from those two organizations.
Thank you, Counsel Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just like to say thanks to Counsel Evans for this special recognition for all those that came together to put on just a top-class event. I was able to attend and I was very proud of what I saw. I'm not sure if we had a chance to mention our medical leader, Dr. Virginia Kane, in partnership with the mayor and the important decisions that they had to make to make sure that everyone was safe. So I want to make sure we give a special shout-out to those two as well. And the Capital Improvement Board and those guys over there did just an awesome job there. So thanks a lot for everyone who worked hard on this.
Excellent, thank you. Counsel Potts?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to echo the sentiments of all of my colleagues and as the husband of a proud Butler Bulldog alum and as someone who March Madness was literally referenced in our wedding vows, I'd just like to please be added as a co-sponsor to this resolution here tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counsel McCormick? You're on mute.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Just again, want to echo the sentiments for my colleagues. As I mentioned earlier with President McRobbie, IUPUI is my employer, but I have a joint position, so I also work at Butler. Actually spent a lot of days at Butler while games were going on at Hinkle. And I can tell you, the campus did a wonderful job in managing those that were on campus. KIB, shout-out to you for what you did. I know Counsel Barrett was there and I was around. I witnessed some of that myself. And I would also like to be added as a co-sponsor. My family, part of the reason my family exists the way it is is because 2010 National Championship game. So I want to say thank you to everyone in the city who made this a great success. I'm so proud of the data and the numbers and everything that's come out from this. So wonderful job, everyone.
Excellent, excellent. Counsel, Chairman Oliver, did you have a comment?
Yes, there's so many that would be acknowledged for what happened the last month or so. It started with Ryan Vaughn and there are many others and I don't want to finish the list, but it starts and ends with Ryan Vaughn. And then so many others that other cities wished that it could have done what we said we thought we tried to plan to do and that's to host the tournament itself. I mean, those up in Lafayette, Butler University, right here in town. I mean, for all this to be coordinated and put together where it was, it's just astounding. And other cities, I'm sure, would like to have done what we did. We're certainly going to be attracting more, I'm sure of that in the future. So acknowledge, again, I want to call out a bunch of names, but I just can't. I just thought with Ryan Vaughn, I am Ryan Vaughn. And thank you, old buddy, hope you're watching. Thank you, Mr. President.
Excellent, thank you. Counsel Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's hard not to miss somebody here, but I'm going to just echo upon the echoes and make sure to say my thanks to everybody from District 18. You know, from, most importantly, the frontline workers, you know, in our hotels, our restaurant, everybody that was there day in, day out. You know, I'm glad that, you know, we had a very safe experience. Again, the public safety officials from police, fire, EMT, everybody that, you know, works the late nights and the early mornings, that, you know, they did a great job and I want to show our respect from District 18 and keep on using this energy forward in a positive way for optimistic futures. So thank you from District 18.
Excellent, thank you. Counsel Jared Evans?
Mr. President, just as a, if you will give us the point here, former Lieutenant Counselor Joanne Sanders is on to speak about this.
All right, are there additional comments from councilors? All right, Tina, I see that we have a couple of guests to speak on this proposal. And I would like to start with former Counselor Joanne Sanders.
Greetings, President Oslay. Greetings from councils of the past. I would like to defer first to Aaron Weingard. He is the president of Local 30- He is the president of Local Thirty, and he'll be making some remarks from the perspective of someone who actually worked in NCAA games. And then I'll give a few comments to wrap up once he's done.
Mr. Weingard?
Hi. Thanks, Joanne. I appreciate that. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Aaron Weingard, and I am the president of the IATSC Local Thirty Stagehands Union. I'm also a third-generation stagehand. I'd like to thank you for the honor to speak with you this evening. When Joanne Sanders shared with the resolution with me, I was instantly overwhelmed with emotion. I represent a little over four hundred women and men, families, Hoosiers, that have had little to no work since that dreadful day back in March twenty-twenty, when we received word that all live events were canceled or postponed indefinitely. Women and men who have worked in the convention center and the Hoosier Dome, Lucas Oil Stadium since nineteen seventy-two, both Market Square Arena and Bankers Life Fieldhouse since their inception, the Coliseum since the nineteen fifties. When we got word that Indianapolis was to play host to the NCAA men's basketball tournament, a glimmer of hope was seen in the eyes of my brothers and sisters. I hope that this could be the beginning of us starting to reclaim our livelihoods. Throughout the course of this historic event, we were able to get over two hundred of our women and men back to work, albeit for a short time, it was a start. It gave us a reminder of what it was like to be at work and what it will be like to get back to work. The motion I spoke of earlier is in reference to the recognition that, excuse me, that those of us who worked behind the scenes to make the magic happen are given. Along with so many others who played their role, as Sports Illustrated put it, in being the city that is lighting the pathway of hope and optimism, and our nation slowly emerges from its COVID- nineteen cave, we are honored for this recognition and are ever diligently standing by for the next show. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Krallwitz, welcome. KIB is Jeremy Krallwitz. Come in.
Thank you, President Oslay, and thank you to the city council. I don't have much to add, but I'm humbled by the recognition that we've received. Keep Indianapolis Beautiful really was, as folks have noted, one of dozens of civic leadership organizations working to make Indianapolis a cleaner, greener, and brighter place. And we were, we really do feel like, at least in regard to sustainability, we have set a marker that this is one of the most sustainable March Madness tournaments ever. We were actually able to do that because of our partnership with the IUPUI Department of Sustainability and my co-chair, Jessica Davis. So could not have done what we've achieved without her help as well. But just we're thrilled to play our parts to make this tournament as successful as it was. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Sanders? Any additional comments?
Thank you, President Oslay. I really appreciate this this evening. On behalf of all the workers, but in particular, on behalf of my local union, I wanted everyone to understand also that Indianapolis was a beta test, not just for sporting events, but for live events and conventions globally. Show managers have been watching diligently since the first teams started arriving in town because their fear was that this could be what set back even further the live events industry. And Indianapolis, I don't know that they recognize how much we depend on live events. The downtown area is replete with those businesses that are still not thriving the way they should. And it is because we built a convention industry. I believe that show managers are watching now, and we will attract new shows. Not as large, but because they can do hybrid, they will reach larger audiences between a virtual and in-person event. And our convention center is primed for it. They've proven themselves. Bless them for adding new ventilation to that building after all these years. That was the selling point that drew most everything that's happened in this city since last September. And I just see onward and upward, we will go with the convention industry. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very, very much. Counselors? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Signify by name. Excellent. The motion carries. Thanks to all who participated and who made this possible. The next item on our agenda is proposal number one-one-five, referred to Public Works Committee, Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number one-fifteen, two thousand twenty-one appoints Abel Convas to the Board of Public Works. Counselor McCormick's second move, and seconded by Counselor Carreno to send proposal number one-fifteen, two thousand twenty-one to the full council with due pass recommendation, and that motion carried by a vote of ten to zero, and I so move.
Second?
The motions are properly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, we proceed to roll call for our vote. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Adamson?
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anae?
Counselor Anae, aye.
Counselor Bane?
Counselor Bane, aye.
Counselor Barth?
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots?
Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown?
Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino?
Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk?
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans?
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans?
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves?
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray?
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Hart?
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Jackson?
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones?
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larison?
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Mascary?
Counselor Mascary, aye.
Counselor McCormick?
Counselor McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury?
Counselor Maury, aye.
Counselor Oliver?
Counselor Oliver, aye.
Counselor Oslay?
Counselor Oslay, aye.
Counselor Potts?
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray?
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson?
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is proposal number one-thirty, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal one-thirty-two thousand twenty-one reconfirms the Marion County Public Defender Board's nomination of Robert J. Hill as the chief Marion County Public Defender. Mr. Hill stated that he is a pleasure, it has been a pleasure to serve as his director. He accepts the obligation of his duties as chief public defender to ensure Indian clients have the best representation. He also said that he is proud they have now been able to add social workers to their staff with representation of their clients. These social workers address issues.
I think we've lost Chairman Robinson for a moment.
Good. I'm glad. I was worried. I thought it was just my computer.
Chairman Robinson, we lost you?
Okay, how much of that did you hear?
What's that?
Issues. You stopped at issues.
All right, I'll start over.
Okay.
Okay, let's start over. Proposal one-thirty-two thousand twenty-one reconfirms the Marion County Public Defender's board nomination of Robert J. Hill as chief Marion County Public Defender. He stated that it is a pleasure to serve as his director, and he accepts the obligation and his duties as chief public defender to ensure Indian clients have their best representation. He said that he is very proud that they have been able to add social workers to their staff to help with representation of their clients. The social workers address issues that clients have that led them down the wrong way. Counselor Oliver moved, seconded by Counselor Jay Evans, to send proposal number one-thirty to the full council with due pass recommendation. The motion carried by a vote of two zero to one with Counselor Booth abstaining. Mr. President, I so move.
Oliver, second.
The motions are properly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, we proceed to roll call for our vote. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Adamson?
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anae?
Counselor Anae, aye.
Counselor Bane?
Counselor Bane, aye.
Counselor Barth?
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots?
Boots abstains.
Counselor Brown?
Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino?
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk?
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans?
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans?
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves?
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray?
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Hart?
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Jackson?
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones?
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larison?
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Mascary?
Counselor Mascary, aye.
Counselor McCormick?
Counselor McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury?
Counselor Maury, aye.
Counselor Oliver?
Aye.
Counselor Oslay?
Counselor Oslay, aye.
Counselor Potts?
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray?
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson?
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote passes twenty-four, yea, one abstention.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is proposal number one-thirty-one, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal one-thirty-one, two thousand twenty-one appoints Evan Sheeran to the Citizens Police Complaint Board. Mr. Sheeran said that he is a lifelong resident of Indianapolis, where he earned his bachelor's and master's degrees in business administration at the University of Indianapolis. He has also served eight years in the U.S. Navy, and has previously worked in public housing and currently works as a business and technology consultant. Counselor Anae moved, seconded by Counselor Maury, to send proposal number one-thirty-one to the full council with due pass recommendation. Motion carried by a vote of thirteen to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
The motions are properly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, we will proceed to roll call for our vote. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Adamson?
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anae?
Counselor Anae, aye.
Counselor Bane?
Counselor Bane, aye.
Counselor Barth?
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots?
Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown?
Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino?
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk?
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans?
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans? Counselor Jared Evans? Counselor Graves?
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray?
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Hart?
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Jackson?
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones?
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larison?
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Lewis, aye.
Counselor Mascary?
Counselor Mascary, aye.
Counselor McCormick?
Counselor McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury?
Counselor Maury, aye.
Counselor Oliver? Counselor Oliver? Counselor Oslay?
Counselor Oslay, aye.
Counselor Potts?
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray?
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson?
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you. Counselor Jared Evans? Counselor Oliver?
Oliver, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. Vote passes twenty-four votes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is introduction of proposals. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal numbers one-thirty-two and one-thirty-three refer to the Administration and Finance Committee, and were introduced by Counselor Oslay. Proposal number one-thirty-two approves an additional appropriation of forty-six million, one hundred forty-seven thousand, one hundred thirty-three dollars in the two thousand twenty-one City Non-Departmental Budget Consolidated, I'm sorry, Consolidated County General Fund, City Community Justice Campus Sub-Fund to support planned expenditures related to the completion of the community.
Counselors, I think we'll need to wait for the clerk to return.
Want me to finish, Jim?
You're right.
Which one, Michelle?
So she can start with one-thirty-two. Let's restart one-thirty-two, please.
Okay. Proposal number one-thirty-two, introduced by Counselor Robinson, is a fiscal ordinance approving an additional appropriation of forty-six million, one hundred forty-seven thousand, one hundred thirty-three dollars in the two thousand twenty-one City Non-Departmental Budget Consolidated County General Fund and City Community Justice Campus Sub-Fund to support planned expenditures related to the completion of the Community Justice Campus. And the president referred to the Administration and Finance Committee. Proposal one-thirty-three, introduced by Counselor, Counselor Oslay, is a proposal for a general ordinance which amends Chapter one-thirty-five, Article seven, Division four of the code regarding the Capital Asset Development Fund, and is referred to the Administration and Finance Committee. Proposal number one-thirty-four, introduced by Counselors Carlino and McCormick, is a proposal for a general ordinance which approves an additional appropriation of one hundred thousand in the two thousand twenty-one budget of the Office of Public Health and Safety Consolidated County General Fund for the purpose of piloting a legal protection fund to provide immediate legal information screenings, consultation, and representation to residents seeking asylum, pursuing citizenship, or those at risk of deportation, referred to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Proposal number one-thirty-five, introduced by Counselors Barth, Potts, and Brown, is a proposal for a general ordinance which amends the code to expand non-smoking areas within the consolidated city to include public parks owned or leased by the city or county. Proposal number one-thirty-six, one-forty-four, sorry, introduced by Counselor Lewis, is a council resolution appointing Belinda Drake to the Board of Business and Neighborhood Services. Proposal number one-forty-five, introduced by Counselor Oslay, is a council resolution which appoints, excuse me, appoints Hope Trible to the Indianapolis Marion County Public Library Board of Trustees, referred to Municipal Corporations Committee. And proposal number one-forty-six, introduced by Counselor Ray, and this is a new one, so let me look at it real quick here, is a proposal for authorizing the City of Indianapolis to issue up to thirty-three. For authorizing the City of Indianapolis to issue up to thirty-three million, six hundred and seventy thousand dollars, City of Indianapolis, Indiana. Economic Development Revenue Refunding Bonds Series two thousand twenty-one. In one or more series and approves and authorizes other actions in respect thereto. To provide funds for refunding the city's previously issued multifamily housing revenue bonds. Series two thousand one B Brayburn Village Apartments. Proceeds of which were used to finance the prior renovation of Brayburn Village Apartments. Located at eighty-two hundred East Twenty-first Street in Council District Nineteen. This was sponsored by Counselor Ray and is referred to the Metropolitan Economic Development Committee. Um, this concludes our introduction of proposals, Mister President.
Um, thank you Assistant Clerk, um, for filling in for Madam Clerk, I understand that she had some technical difficulties. Um, so. The next item on our agenda is special orders, priority business. Proposal numbers one thirty-seven through one forty, two thousand twenty-one are all resuming ordinance certified for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission. On March, uh, twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one. If no one wishes to call any of these, uh, resumings down for public hearing, they will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down any of the resumings? Counselor Boots.
Thank you, Mister President, I don't wish to call any down, I just wanted to clarify that. Due to a potential conflict, I did, I wanted to accuse myself from any consideration of proposition one forty.
Very good, thank Counselor Boots. Any comments from any of the other counselors? Alright, seeing that, um, proposal numbers. Proposal numbers one, uh, thirty-seven to one forty will pass into law. The next item on our agenda is special orders, public hearing, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mister President, proposal one one six, two thousand twenty-one. Approves the transfers of additional appropriations totaling. Six hundred and ninety-three, five hundred thousand dollars, two thousand twenty-one budget. Of the Office of Public Health and Safety. And Consolidated County General and Federal Grant Funds. For the purpose of funding operations of the James E. Walters Junior. Community Medicaid, Community Mediation Center. Non-congregant housing and personal protective gear and additional supplies. The Community Violence Reduction Team. Matt Giffen, Director of the Office of Public Health and Safety. Julie Fiddler, Director of the James Walters Community Medication Center. Emily Schrock. Chief of Strategic Initiatives for the American Prosecutor's Office. And Dane Nutty of the Executive Director of Indianapolis Public Safety Foundation. Are presented and reviewed a PowerPoint with the committee. This is what proposal one sixteen does, it re-characterized twenty thousand dollars in advance reduction budget. Which enables Community Violence Reduction Team to purchase personal protection equipment. And supplies needed for their outreach work. It appropriates two million, four hundred and forty-three thousand and five hundred dollars in the federal grant fund. These funds are eligible for one percent FEMA reimbursement. The non-congress shelter project for our, for our high-risk homeless neighbors. And appropriate fifty thousand dollars for community mediation center. Center will function under the nonprofit Indy Public Safety Foundation. With financial support from the city. Counsel Oliver moved, seconded by Counsel Carlino to send proposal number one sixteen to the full council, they do pass recommendation. Motion carried by a vote of ten to zero. However, Mister President, Counselors Anay, Dilk, and Jared Evans were able to cast recorded votes. Due to audio difficulties, so they will be able to vote today. Mister President, I so move.
Second.
Okay, the motions are properly moved and seconded, other comments and counselors. Counselor Hart.
Thank you, Mister President, uh, if, I just want to check and see if we had somebody from OPHS or Matt Giffen here to answer any questions around. Just the funds, just to make sure it's all clarified, uh, that it sounded from the synopsis that Counsel Robinson made here that. These funds would be reimbursed by federal dollars and I just want to get that validated on the record.
Very good, I think we have someone here from OPHS, I believe that is, uh, interim Director Giffen.
Thank you, uh, President Osley, I, I, I am here and. We, we had planned to run through our, uh, presentation this evening, uh, after talking with the clerk, if, if you prefer that we just answer questions, that's of course fine as well.
Uh, if that question's for me, Mister President, I'd prefer they just answer questions.
Okay.
If it was for me.
Second.
Counselor Hart, did you have some questions?
Yeah, my, my question was around the basis of the, the federal dollars, uh, reimbursing. The expenditure.
Yeah, I, I'd have you to answer that, Mister President.
Please go ahead, and I'm, I'm forgive me, I think I might have called you interim director, I think that was maybe slightly an error, um.
It's, it's just slightly outdated, that's all, um, Lauren, Lauren Rodriguez, who, uh, I think, uh, some of the members may have. Spoken to already is the new director as of, uh, about a week and a half ago, and I'm now the Deputy Corporation Counselor. Uh, they just, they decided I should, uh, carry this through since I was there at the committee stage, but. Changed titles.
Very good.
Uh, to answer Counselor Hart's question, uh. What, what this, uh, that portion of the resolution does is. The, the approximate cost of continuing the non-congregant shelter program. Through the end of June for, for three more months, on top of what had already been contracted, is about two point three million dollars. And, uh. Approximately, uh, two point four million of the total cost of the program from January through the end of June. Uh, for hotel rooms themselves and for meals is one hundred percent reimbursable by FEMA. Uh, as part of the, the COVID relief program that FEMA has set up. So by moving this money to the FEMA, uh, fund, which would then be fully reimbursed, uh, at a later point by the federal government, we're able to extend. This program for an additional three months without any additional net costs to the city.
Very good. Additional questions from counselors?
Counselor Gray has a question.
Alright, um, uh, Chairman Gray?
Yes, uh, what kind of mediation does you do, do you do and where is this, uh? Walters, uh, Community Center located?
Hi Counselor.
Counselor Gray, it's, it's Julie Fiddler, um, I'm happy to answer that. Um, we do community mediation, so that is not. Lawyer mediation, it's neighbors that are having conflicts with one another who. Um, we're trying to prevent that from becoming. A situation where it escalates to violence. We also offer referrals through our partners in the community. Um, we are completely guided by the community and represented through our volunteers. And, um, and through. Our board, our advisory board. By the community, um, and we are located at Tenth and Rural, right across the street from the Marathon Gas Station.
Okay.
Thank you for your question.
Uh, Counselor Anay.
Thank you, Mister President, I, I tried to make some comments at the committee and was having some audio difficulty, and so I just wanted to go on record. Um, uh, Jamesy Waters Junior, as many people know him as Jim Waters, was just a true gentleman. And represented what a, what a professional police officer is, he, he passed away far too soon. Uh, as our city's deputy chief. And just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge him, I'm very excited to keep this mediation center continue. I hope that, uh, it'll be able, uh, to be a vehicle in reducing violent crime in Indianapolis. And get our city back on the right, uh, path. And I just think it's a great tribute to him and all the work that he did for many years, the Waters family, long, longtime law enforcement family in Indianapolis, so I want to acknowledge Jim. And express my excitement at this, uh, mediation center's, uh, great potential, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, additional comments? And counselors? Alright, um, Vice President Adamson.
Mister President, I, I just wanted to echo, uh, Counsel Anay, uh, Jim Waters was an amazing man, uh, he was beloved by both. Officer and resident alike, uh, his, his passing was, was not only stunning, was. An enormous loss to the city, uh, and to the, the people of Indianapolis, and, uh, I think this, uh, this, uh, this center is going to be, is a fitting. Named after him, so I'm, I'm excited to see this recognition as well.
Thank you. Uh, is there, uh, are there any additional comments?
Uh, Mister Chairman. Mister Chairman.
Yes. Oh yes, um, Chairman Jackson.
Thank you, I echo all my Counselor sentiments, um, I had the pleasure to work with him, um. On East District, as I'm a East District, uh, Counselor, and, um, very hard at the services. And, um, even went to his brother's services that preceded him in death, so it was very hard for. For me when he passed and very unexpectedly, I think this, this, uh, center being named after him in his honor for the work of the. Constituents that he served. Will be very, uh, appreciated by his family and those that he did serve. And I would like to be, if it's okay with Counselor, um, Chairman Robinson, I'd, I'd like to be added as a post.
Very good.
Thank you.
I don't see any additional comments from counselors. So I would ask, um, uh, the clerk is, um, we've had any, uh, public comments? Proposal one sixteen. Madam Clerk.
Mister President, there were no comments.
Alright, very good. Um, I'll ask if there's anyone in, in the P A R would like to comment on, on the proposal one sixteen? Right, um, I see no one. So. The counselors, if there are no additional, um, uh, comments. And we have nothing submitted online. Then let us proceed to roll call for our vote. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mister President, Counselor Adamson.
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay.
Counselor Anay, aye.
Counselor Bain.
Counselor Bain, aye.
Counselor Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots.
Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown.
Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino.
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk.
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans.
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans. Counselor Graves.
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray.
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Hart.
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larison.
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Lewis, aye.
Counselor Masc, excuse me, Counsel Mascary.
Mascary, aye.
Counselor McCormick.
Counselor McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury.
Counselor Maury, aye.
Counselor Oliver.
Counselor Oliver, aye.
Counselor Osley.
Counselor Osley, aye.
Counselor Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray.
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans. Mister President, the vote is twenty-four zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, there is a business under special orders, unfinished business, so we will now proceed to special orders, final adoption. And that next item on our agenda is proposal number one seventeen, regard to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mister President, with consent, I'd like to take proposals number one seventeen through one twenty together.
Consent.
Thank you, counselors, uh, proposal number one seventeen, two thousand twenty-one authorizes intersection controls at County Ridge Drive and County View Court, District Six. Proposal number one eighteen authorizes intersection controls at Forty-second Street and Carroll Room. In District Four, proposal number one nineteen, two thousand twenty-one authorizes operating restrictions. At Kenwood Avenue and Thirty-eighth Street in District Seven. And proposal number two, one twenty, two thousand twenty-one, excuse me. Authorizes speed limit reductions to twenty-five miles per hour in the woods at Liberty Park Subdivision in District Eighteen. Counselor Hart moved, seconded by Counsel Gray to send proposals one seventeen through one twenty to the full council, the due pass recommendation. Carry by a vote of ten to zero, I so move. Second.
Well, motions are properly moved and seconded, are there any comments from counselors? Seeing none, we proceed now to roll call for our vote, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mister President, Counselor Adamson.
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay.
Counselor Anay, aye.
Counselor Bain.
Counselor Bain, aye.
Counselor Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots.
Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown.
Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino.
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk.
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans.
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans. Counselor Graves. Counselor Graves.
Counselor Gray, yes.
Sorry about that. Counselor Gray's, aye.
Counselor Gray.
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Hart.
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Jackson.
Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larison.
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Mascary.
Counselor Mascary, aye.
Counselor McCormick.
Counselor McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury.
Counselor Maury, aye.
Counselor Oliver.
Counselor Oliver, aye.
Counselor Osley.
Counselor Osley, aye.
Counselor Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray.
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mister President. Vote's twenty-four zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, there is no business under special service district councils and there is no business under new business. So the next item on our agenda is announcement and adjournment. But the docket and agenda for this meeting of council having been completed. The chair will now entertain motions for adjournment.
Mister President.
Uh, Chair recognizes Counselor Maury.
Mister President, I have been asked to offer the following motion for adjournment. By Counselor Graves in memory of Maurice Womack and Pamela Bradley. By Counselor Jones in memory of Alice Jean Ballard. By Counselors Brown and Osley in memory of John Alan Whitcomb. By Counselor Barth in memory of Murph Mahi, Mahihey.
Counselor Maury.
Thank you, go ahead.
Counselor Maury, could I jump in very quickly, my apologies, Mister President? I'd just like to clarify that, um, it's Rick Mahaffey, uh, not Murph Mahaffey, Murph is the son of Rick and Murph is my constituent.
Thank you, I was struggling with the last name anyway, so thank you.
Thank you.
Um. By Counselor Osley in memory of John Wilcox, Ewing Miller, and Francis Beers. By Counselor Anay in memory of Wilda Luis Dashil and Jerry O. Ericret. Mister President, I would like to move the adjournment of this meeting of the Indianapolis City County Council in recognition of and respect for the life and contributions. Of those persons I have here specifically named. I respectfully ask the support of fellow counselors. I further request that this, that the motion be made part of the permanent records of this body and that a letter bearing the council's seal and the signature of the president be sent to. The family of each person advising of this action.
Thank you, Counselor Maury, hearing no objection, the motion is received and requests are so ordered. Hearing no further motions, uh, we are adjourned, thank you, counselors.